2025 to order. At this time, I ask you, rise if you are able, for the Pledge of Allegions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. I will recognize the Assistant Township Manager to call the roll.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you to the Chair and to the Board and staff and public for joining us this afternoon for the January 8th special meeting of the Board of Supervisors. This meeting has been properly advertised in accordance with the Pennsylvania Sunshine Act as a hybrid meeting with the option to attend virtually and in person here in the main meeting room. If you are in attendance virtually using the WebEx platform and wish to speak on behalf of an agenda item, please say your name, municipality of residence, and the topic you wish to speak on when the chairperson calls on you. If you are attending in person with us in the main meeting room and wish to speak on behalf of an agenda item, please address the board at the podium and state your name, municipality of residence, and topic you wish to speak on. Prior to commencing the meeting, I have a few short procedural items to cover. First, members of the public attending using the WebEx platform are asked to remain muted during the meeting to prevent any ambient noise from disrupting the meeting. If a member of the public is acknowledged by the Chair, they may unmute their microphone for their second question, or, excuse me, for their question or comments. Secondly, board members are asked to indicate their name when motioning or seconding a motion so that the minutes may accurately reflect the action taken. Finally, a roll call of the Board of Supervisors will now be taken to ensure that all members can hear and interact using the WebEx meeting platform. Please indicate that you are here when your name is called. Ms. Strickland.
Here.
Ms. Stevens.
Here.
Mr. Thompson.
Here.
Mr. Patterson. Mr. Heller. Chair, you have a call.
Okay. Thank you. Next is public input. Do we have any members of the public that want to address the Board of Supervisors on any items not on the agenda? Seeing none in the room, seeing none online. We have special reports and acknowledgements. We have the Center County Municipal Planning Organization providing an update on the 2050 Long Range Transportation Plan, which will be presented by Ms. Ann Messner. Manager, would you like to introduce our special guests today?
Thank you. Well, we have two special guests with us this evening, or this afternoon. We have the Center Region Planning Agency Transportation Planner, Ann Messner, and we have the Township Engineer, Ron Seibert, and together they will review a presentation prepared by the Township Engineer and facilitate dialogue among the board to respond to questions presented by Ann Messner in response to the CCMPO's plan, Long Range Plan, Long Range Transportation Plan. Thank you.
All right.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thanks for your time. We do these plans every five years, so we appreciate it when municipalities spend a little extra time in helping us out through this process. So just real quick, I'm gonna, you've seen a lot of these slides before, so I'm just gonna go to the heart of why we're here today. And that's the Long Range Transportation Plan. A couple things to keep in mind. We, like I said before, we update this every five years. We need to make sure that it includes all modes of transportation, even emerging transportation that we may not have thought of. We have to be kind of flexible in that regard, even though we don't know what it is. It has to have goals and objectives. It also has to evaluate what is currently required in terms of performance measures. So that is transit, pavement condition, bridge condition, and safety, which is basically what are our crash rates. It must be a 20-year plan, but we go out 30 years. We have a lot of aspirational plans in the current document, and in order to keep them alive, if you will, we go further out because at some point, we may actually get funding for them. So we want to be ready. And it must be fiscally constrained. So highway and bridge has to be fiscally constrained. That's why we have an aspirational component to the plan. Transit is a little different, and it has some flexibility to it, but it's a totally different program in terms of how they are funded and what types of things they can fund. Just a quick overview, we always have to look at what our community looks like. It is a countywide plan, so we look at all of our most recent demographic information. We try to update our GIS layers, anything that we have in terms of most recent bridge evaluations. Those tend to be very important. In Center County, we have quite a few bridges, and we're always looking for opportunities to fund them, as well as what are our recent crash trends, and then stakeholder input. And this, you as residents of the county are stakeholders, so it's good for us to get ourselves out there and see what your perspective is. We do have an equity requirement that is filtered down through federal highway to PennDOT to the MPO, so we do our best to try to address equity issues without proposing projects that potentially do harm to those population groups. All this is put together so we look at what our main issues are, how we can implement them, and that actually comes into a draft plan, all of that information. And that plan is then out for public comment. It has a 30-day comment period, and we hope that we're on track and we don't have to make a lot of revisions. We are required to adopt this in September of 2025. If we do not adopt it, then we are going to get in pretty big trouble and potentially will lose funding. So we have to, we have to keep this moving. Talked a little bit about engagement. These are the five questions that we would like to have answered, and we've narrowed this process down, simplified it to five questions. Previous iterations, we've just had too many items that came up in terms of discussion when we asked a lot of questions, and we had a really hard time narrowing it down. So this time, rather than having a long list of items that we would like to see in terms of improvements, equipment, signage, we decided to go with these five questions to keep it simple and then more uniform in terms of what answers we're hoping with our municipalities. And then, just real quick, I wanted to just highlight the staff that is working on this plan. We have quite a few people. I did want to note, Koche is now a senior advisor at the county, so she will not be working as much on it, but we have an opening at Center County, so if anyone would like to be a transportation planner, please consider applying. The job description is on the county webpage. I am going to turn it over to Ron because he did a great job in kind of priming you for answering these questions.
Don't go too far, though.
You can sit down. Thanks. So in the agenda packet, I think, is the same presentation you maybe have some chance to look at ahead of time. If not, that's okay. We're gonna walk through each of the slides a little bit at a time. I want to try to keep it informal because we want to get feedback and input, I think, as we go. So it's kind of more of an open dialogue with the board members and the public. Also, in the packet was a Word document that was very long, that's kind of historical, a lot of the issues that were discussed in some of the previous LRTP updates. So I reviewed all of that document for you, and I pulled out what I thought were some of the major things that were still applicable as we kind of go through this discussion. So we're just gonna walk through each of those five questions that the MPO is looking for feedback on, and the first one here is, you know, what are the major needs and issues with respect to highways and bridges. So I am kind enough to provide for me a map, and so you'll see on the screen routes that are highlighted in green and in red, and these are the routes that are eligible for federal funding. They're, so, all the state highways in our municipality, but there are also some local roads there as well. So highlight things like Blue Course Drive, Science Park Road, a portion of Circleville Road, a portion of, actually, all of Old Gatesburg Road, a portion of Nixon, a portion of Whitehall. So these are the locations and areas that we would have a higher probability of being able to receive federal funding for projects. The only project that I came across in the past ones, because we've completed some projects recently, like the North Atherton Street improvements, as we've recently completed the safety improvements at the intersection of Shingle Town Road, College Avenue, and Pine Grove Road has also been completed. The one that's not been completed is the Pine Grove Road, Nixon Road, Water Street location there in Pine Grove Mills. And from the work that was done with the Pine Grove Mills Mobility Report, we know that it does not meet the warrants for a signal at this time, and we also talked about configurations of potential roundabout or just pedestrian safety improvements there, and that's the option that the board is currently looking at as pedestrian safety improvements. So I didn't know if we still wanted to have that project on there for a potential realignment in the future. That's something that was talked about. And then what other ideas the board members may have for potential improvement projects within the township. So this is where it's kind of open dialogue, questions, ideas, thoughts, and we'll jot them down and we'll get them included on the list.
Anything coming to mind?
I mean, I'll say, I think we're addressing a lot of the concern that led to the idea of the realignment with some things that are also addressing pedestrian safety, speeds going through there. So in my mind, I don't know that the realignment is necessary at this point. It didn't come up as something that was desired when we did the small area plan or the mobility study. So it seemed like, you know, there were more concerns about doing that than doing other things, you know, that it would create a real runway, so to speak, coming down the mountain up through Nixon, and you'd also lose what apartments we have in that area. So there were, like, a couple of really big negatives to it. So I'm supportive of, I think it's on there. I think it's on the current plan, if I'm not, yeah. So I'd be supportive of removing that because I think we're addressing a lot of those.
Yeah, you're right. So the mobility study that was done, and we'll get to that a little bit later. We're gonna highlight some of those projects. You'll see there's a project in there that we currently are looking for a consultant to help us with the preliminary engineering on that, what that would look like to implement the pedestrian crossing improvements, the flashing warning devices, lighting, and the chicanes to help slow down traffic. So, yeah, you're correct on that, Lisa.
We'll go online. Ms. Stevens is recognized.
Thank you. I don't know if it needs to be on here or not, but it has to do with the intersection of North Atherton and Aaron Drive, just realizing that that intersection has potential for, I don't know, just a lot of traffic if in fact the Wawa goes in, and if in fact the state liquor store moves to the right end.
Yeah, that's a good point. The one that I would bring up, I've noticed Blue Course and Circleville, T-Berry. The intersection alignment is quite unique that if you're coming out of T-Berry, you don't necessarily always see how cars exiting Circleville are, exiting if they're going straight or turning left, because the Circleville, like, kind of goes like, maybe like 45 degrees that direction. And then there is no left turn signal into T-Berry. So you are, at times, waiting in traffic there, but also those coming out of the apartment complex at the corner of Blue Course and Circleville tend to do a lot of U-turn sequences right at that intersection as well, which honestly have sometimes caught me a little bit off guard, turning right out of T-Berry. I don't know if it necessarily, like, warrants a realignment, but maybe there is some signal enhancements that we can do to make that a little bit safer, so there's not as much, like, guessing or predicting.
Yeah.
And it's also a very busy intersection for pedestrian improvement, not improvement, but pedestrian activity. You got a bus stop there, but then you also do have a bunch of bike paths merging into that intersection. So there is just a lot to keep an eye on when you're going through that intersection or entering or exiting.
Yeah, the left turn phase for traffic to enter T-Berry Ridge is one of the recommended projects that came out of the North Southern Area Mobility Study.
Oh, okay.
So that is a potential improvement project that's there. I don't know that that level of project would necessarily bode well for potential funding on the Long Range Transportation Plan. We've been very successful with getting Greenlight Go and Arlie Grants for signal-type improvements. I think it's just a matter of the township kind of prioritizing which one is next and when we get them done. So we have, we do have a current Greenlight Go grant that was awarded for the intersection of North Atherton Street, Blue Course Drive, and Clinton Avenue to make a number of improvements there, implementing left turn phases for all approaches, not just two. Implementing leading pedestrian intervals on all approaches as well as a result of that, and then putting in accessible pedestrian signals and enhancing the lighting. So we did get funding for that one. So we've been pretty, like I said, pretty successful with getting Greenlight Go and Arlie Grant funding for those projects.
Thank you.
I was just thinking a little bit here about the intersection at Pine Grove Water Street and Nixon Road, and instead of maybe pulling that from a recommended project on the LRTP, maybe we just pull the portion that deals with the realignment. Because if we come up with a very large estimate to do improvements for pedestrian safety, we may still want to come as a project sponsor and try to get that funded on the program, either for safety improvement funds or something else. So I'd suggest we leave it there, but just take off the realignment portion.
You read my mind.
Okay.
Because it's in two different phases on the current plan, and there is, you know, really significant, you know, over one and a half million dollars for the major portion of improvements on there. And there are still needed improvements. Probably most of those are, you know, just speed advisory type things because it's, you know, it's a truck issue. But I think you're exactly right. So if there are other opportunities for improvements coming through there, I think leaving it, because it is, it isn't a, it isn't really specific on there. You know, it's really about the construction of a lower truck escape ramp, and so I think if that's, if that can be kind of, you know, reimagined as...
Yes, I think we're on the same page, really, just kind of at this point, looking at with respect to pedestrian safety improvements at the intersection, things like chicanes to lower speeds, pedestrian crossing enhancements.
Yeah.
An upgrade to the flashing warning signal and better lighting at the intersection, all those things that we talked about in the mobility study.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, and then at the top of the mountain, you know, before you're coming around the curve, you know, before you're going past the water tower and all that, those things, you know, having a little enhanced alert system up there probably too. But that's all going to cost money, so I agree, leaving it in there.
Very good input on that. Mr. Patterson?
What we have here today, is there, is the data still telling us it's what's necessary? At the... Data meaning, I don't know, police records, you know, showing the number of accidents, pedestrian accidents, car accidents. Like, what's the data telling us? Traffic counts? What's the data telling us for what we should do?
For the Pine Grove Water Street Nixon Intersection?
I'm just saying writ large.
Oh, at large.
Yeah.
Yeah. So part of the Long Range Transportation Plan update, there is other components that are beyond just what our aspirations are that'll be looked at at the county. That includes running a model with respect to operations at certain key intersections, and I believe there is also a safety component of that, too, is there not, and it looks at crash data and that type of thing countywide to look for potential needs in that regard as well. So we didn't do that in-house to staff.
Copy that. And then, you know, so for question one, kind of key corridors.
Yeah.
Like, do we have anything, like, citizen portal, incidents logged? I'm just kind of thinking out here, because I, you know, I drive. I agree with all that I've heard. And now it's like, okay, what else? Because there's, you know, four people participating. How about the other, I don't know, 10,000-plus drivers in the, in the community? What's, you know, their, their experiences tell, what are their experiences telling us?
So all I've put down is based upon what I know as well as a driver, as the engineer for the township, and what feedback I've received as well.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anything else on the first one here? Yeah, go ahead.
So you're just looking for the corridors now, and then you'll get into...
Yeah, so this is just, yeah, major needs for highways and bridges, and both of our bridges are both in good condition, so we don't really see a need to look at program and replacement of those bridges at this point.
I'm sure you'll get into it, but I guess I'd just also kind of emphasize pedestrian crossings on Atherton.
We're gonna get to it.
Yeah, between Cherry Lane all the way up to...
Yeah, in fact, I think it might even be the next slide.
Yeah, yeah, so...
Before you go there, so you've mentioned bridges are fine today, but for, you know, 2020, 2055, though, we fine then too? Or should we start thinking about that programming?
That's a good point, Amari. That's a good point, yeah. That's probably worth looking at our bridge ratings to see where we're at, to see if it's something we need to start thinking about within the next 30 years.
Yeah. Awesome. Thank you. Even sudden surprises, that seems to be a common theme. We actually heard from Mike Carroll at a PML. Carroll at PML, there was quite a few bridges that just washed out during severe weather events this year that they had to really haul all the resources to get those back up and going. So, you know, maybe just kind of maybe, yeah.
How many bridges do we have in the township?
Good question.
Two that we own, and then Pendott also has some bridges in the township as well. We have the Timber Bridge that's on, yeah, just drew a blank.
Happens every time.
Diverly Road, sorry. Just off of 45, there's the Hardwood Glue laminated Timber Bridge, first of its kind in Pennsylvania. That was a demonstration project that was done at the township. And then we also have the, it's really, it's a box culvert on West Gatesburg Road. It goes over Halfman Creek. That's our other bridge that meets the classification. The other structures that you see, even the ones on township roads, like on Marango Road and Whitehall Road, those are still owned by Pendott. When we took the roads back, Pendott kept the bridges. So that, the one on Marango Road, I think that is in the, in the near term as a potential project to be upgraded by Pendott. Move on to the next one?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. So the next one is getting into what are called alternative transportation those. So bicycle pedestrian transit, we don't have a lot of horse and buggy or ATV activity in the township, at least not that I've seen. But kind of looking for gaps and capacity issues, you know, what are the issues we have with our bicycle pedestrian transit network? So I put down a number of bullets here. So I'll just kind of walk through each one of them first, and that'll maybe give the board members some time to think of some other ones as well. So there are sidewalk gaps all along West College Avenue from Coral Street all the way out to Whitehall Road. It's an incomplete sidewalk network. And I think that's a corridor that we see a fair amount of pedestrian activity that would be a worthwhile project to consider in the future. A project that we're currently working on that would likely seek funding for as well is a shared use path extension along Blue Course Drive and Clinton Avenue. So that would go from basically T-Berry Lane intersection there where the shared use path is, the Tudex Circleville path, continue to the east along Blue Course Drive, cross Martin Street, cross Atherton Street, continue along Clinton Avenue over to the McKee Street bikeway. The next one I pulled from the previous one as well is just CADA stop improvements, just recognizing that there's always a need for improvements at our CADA bus stops for, to meet ADA requirements, and then what other shelters and lighting, those types of things. So it's kind of a support for CADA, particularly when they're citing new, new pad locations. There's been talk also about some type of a bicycle and pedestrian connection from the Village of Pine Grove Mills into State College. So that's still on the list. I saw in there also what's been talked about also recently, it's some type of alternative mode access to rail travel. I'm not sure what that looks like or what that is, but just acknowledging that. The bullet there for others, so we can have dialogue for the board members to think about what else we'd like to add to that list. But as we're doing that, I just want to go through a couple of, well, actually, there's four slides that summarizes some of the projects that came out of the Northland Area Mobility Study. Because most of these projects are really focused on bicycle and pedestrian, not all, but most of them really are, as well as transit. So I'm not sure how well you can see that, but I'm just going to kind of talk through each of these. So this table came right out of the Northland Area Mobility Study that was completed. And then what I do is I just kind of keep track of how we're making progress on these projects. So the first two projects on here are that shared use path along Blue Course Drive and Clinton Avenue. And so we're acknowledging that we're already in preliminary design on that, you know, trying to look for some type of a grant application. The next one down was where we talked about a mid-block, mid-block crossing on Blue Course Drive, that that's been deleted by relocating the CADA stop. So that's no longer being pursued. We had a flashing yellow arrow on eastbound Blue Course Drive at Martin Street, but that is done. The next item down is a T-Berry Lane sidewalk gap. That's along T-Berry Lane on the east side of that. The sidewalk doesn't end, so that's a current project in design for, for construction next year. The next one is the Green Light Go project that I mentioned earlier to you, Atherton and Blue Course Drive. So this will provide benefit for vehicles going into overlook heights that are going southbound on Atherton Street, as well as vehicles exiting overlook heights on Clinton Avenue by providing advanced left turn phases there. The other things that will do is it will provide accessible pedestrian signals on all crossings and leading pedestrian intervals for all crossings as well. So that project's already moving forward. Some of the things that aren't being done, bus turnouts on Martin Street, that's a fairly large project, almost half a million dollars back in 2019. That one has not had any activity on it yet to date with respect to moving forward. The next one down is...
Anyone else?
As we were, as we were standing here talking about bus stops and pedestrians getting to bus stops, there's, there's one location that came to mind that hasn't been on the plan in the past, but is on a federal aid route, and that's Circleville Road. I think of the section of Circleville Road that goes for Blue Course Drive back up along Park Hills over towards Science Park Road. That's, that is a bus route, and I frequently see people out there waiting for the bus, but yet there's no, there's no accessible way to get there. I think people have to walk on the road. In the winter time, that can be especially. Now, that would be a very difficult corridor to construct sidewalks in, limited right-of-way, a lot of property impacts. So it would not be an easy project to complete, but it's probably one worth having a conversation about.
I, I think that's, you know, where to start it too, because even if there's just some kind of, you know, small refuge that's created on those places where we know we can't create the connectivity, you know, at least if there's a safe waiting area. So, you know, as much as we can either work with the LRTP on this or with the CADA project.
Speaking of even in that area, Blue Course outside Alight is a bus stop that doesn't even have a cement pad. I don't think that a lot of people are waiting there. It's more of a drop-off, but still from a safety and even mobility standpoint, like this time of the year, I'm sure mud or ice is very common. So even just having the cement pad there for a safe, non-slip and accessible...
Those types of things are probably going to come out of this inventory that CADA's going to do for all their stops. So, so the one at Alight, as well as the ones that exist on Circleville, some type of improvements, what does that look like to make them ADA?
Thing to note.
Yeah. I, I think I've seen that because if I'm correct, either it's been vacant for now years, or was it one-time vacant to stop it? Best Buy. There's a pull-off, a shelter, but I don't think any of the routes go through there anymore. Anything else? Otherwise, I do have another item to think about when it comes to pull-outs, and this was one, bus pull-outs, this is one thing that was brought up by a resident during the Northland Mobility Study was if you put in a bus pull-off, you do, of course, save time for maybe 10 or so cars with one or two people in them to not have to wait for the bus. But if you have a bus full of 80 or 100 people that go into a bus pull-off, now all those people are waiting on traffic to clear for their bus to resume the route. So I never really thought about it that way, but it's like, oh, spend $500,000 just to maybe possibly delay 100 people versus spending nothing to delay only 10 people.
Yeah, I think if you would talk to the CADA operators, they would prefer there were no bus pull-offs anywhere. They would much rather stop in the lane because, as you say, it's easier for them to keep going.
Yeah.
If you talk to the people that drive cars behind the buses, they would wish there was a bus pull-off at every stop. So yes, we as the township, you as elected officials, get to decide how do we want to have our network look. So certain locations, we put them in, other places we haven't.
Any other feedback? Otherwise, I think, you know, if there's no objections, Ron can move on to the next one.
Okay. All right. The next question deals with the emerging technologies. So new emerging technologies to be deployed to improve mobility or system operations. So I primed it, I put a couple up here, and I'll talk through what those are. Again, I'll see what the board thinks about those, and maybe while I'm talking, there's some other ideas you all have. So the first one, and I'll explain the acronyms, I guess, is the Global Positioning System Based Emergency Vehicle Preemption Transit Signal Priority. That's EVP-TSP. So what this, this would need to be a regional project. This isn't something that would just be implemented in Ferguson Township because of the whole existing emergency vehicle preemption is a center region project. But what this would do would allow for a better response for emergency vehicles and a more efficient operation for transit vehicles. The current system, the way it operates is there's a strobe light on the vehicles that is emitted that is picked up by a receiver that's on the signal. So the distance that that light beam can hit that receiver is basically your limitation in when that signal goes to the controller to say, hi, I'm an emergency vehicle, I need a green, stop everybody else. In the process of that stopping, you have to go through all of your clearance intervals. So if a pedestrian has pushed the push button to walk, and they just started walking, you have to wait that 18 or 20 or 24 seconds for that to count down, to then go through the yellow and the red, four to six seconds of clearance time before you get that green for that emergency vehicle. Works okay if the person's out there. A lot of places, we don't have too many pedestrian calls, so it's not too much of an issue. But where we do have more pedestrian calls, not every time that emergency vehicle is going to be preempted by the time they get there. The GPS-based system knows where the station is, where the vehicle's coming from, there's a locator on the vehicle which already exists, and knows the route too, so we can anticipate. It doesn't have to worry about a hill or a curve where it can't see that vehicle coming. So it's a better response for emergency vehicles. And then also for the transit side of it, where it makes it more efficient for operations is the current system on the CADA buses, there's an emitter that's on all the time because that emitter is not tied to the location of the bus with respect to its route time. So every time the bus comes on approach, it's putting a call into the signal to say, hey, I'm here, give me a priority. And that happens every time a bus goes through, whether it's behind schedule, on schedule, or ahead of schedule. Doesn't matter. It's saying, I need more time, give me more time. So every time that happens, that time has to come from somewhere in a coordinated system like North Atherton Street, and it ends up coming from the side streets. So we've had complaints in the past from people on overlook heights saying, I can't get out, there's not enough time. Yeah, I know, because we're giving priority to the buses. So what this system would do is it would be geolocated with the bus. It would know the bus's schedule, and this equipment's already on the buses. So that if the bus is on schedule or ahead of schedule, there's no need to provide that transit priority. So it would help the signals be more efficient and operational in that regard. So that's the first one. That's the kind of emerging technology that I would like to suggest we consider in the region. The second one is we just, and this is a conversation that's been had somewhat, and kind of quieted down over the last few handful of years, but it's really starting to plan for, and this is not just a township, this is again a region-wide thing, start thinking about connected vehicles with our traffic signal systems. So having that vehicle infrastructure capabilities where the vehicle can talk to the, the signal phasing and timing data, they call that spat, that's coming from the controller, so they can better anticipate operations. If no one's going to go red, to try to assist the drivers, it will know if there's a pedestrian call in, so the heads-up display for the car would know, hey, there's a pedestrian call, watch for pedestrians. So those types of things. So there's technologies that are being developed for that. We're not ready to implement any of this stuff yet, but I think in the next 15 to 20 years, it's going to be there. So it's just something we got to start thinking about and planning for. What's that going to look like? What's the infrastructure we need to have on the streets to be compatible with the information, the devices that are being put in the vehicles by the automobile industry so that we can take advantage of that?
Anyone from the board have anything to add?
I love it. That's good. I think this was also maybe the section where the delivery robots came in the mind. And there, there are plenty, I think FedEx, UPS, even Chick-fil-A, you can name a bunch that have utilized this technology in other places. It's just whether or not, you know, that eventually gets a green light here, but it can be the future.
And I would be interested, along that line, Jeremy, I would be interested in any of the sort of policy issues that are related to that, that we should be looking into.
Yeah, that was a discussion the Planning Commission had back in 2020 when the former Planning and Zoning Director introduced an article on this technology to us. And it kind of starts with, or at least it's best to have a policy, policy in place so that you don't necessarily have a robot free-for-all in town. So, anything else?
I think that GPS, GPS technology for the emergency vehicles, it just makes so much sense. So I'd definitely be supportive of including that.
Okay.
Just going to say we're...
Nothing else? We'll move on?
Yeah, I think we're good to move on.
Okay. The next one was needs and issues that exist throughout the region or the county, so not just within the township. Again, I kind of looked back and kind of used my own knowledge of the area, started listing out, listing out projects. So the first one is the completion of the I-99 IAD interchange, which is already funded, but not yet completed. But I think we just, it'll be there, it has to be there. The completion of the State College Area Connector Project, that's the 322 project connection from Bollesburg essentially out to Platters Mills Gap. The next one I have there is to continually evaluate and consider the Airport Connector Project. And for those that aren't familiar, that's some type of a direct connection from I-99 at the vicinity of Innovation Park out to the airport, as opposed to folks getting off using Park Avenue, using Fox Hall Road to get out to the airport. So that's been talked about. I think the business and community is very interested in that as well. So the next one is something that you've not seen in the past probably, but this is something that I'm a little bit passionate about. So I got the chance to put it in since I prepared the presentation. So this is really just talking more. We have the ability to do this, but yet we don't do it, and I don't know why. But we need to start thinking about safety more than capacity. We talk a lot about Vision Zero, Safe Streets For All, a safe and efficient network. We always use the word safe first, but when we're evaluating projects, we don't always look at the safety first, we look at the operations. So we have the ability to start to weigh those two metrics because there are ways to quantify safety benefits now, not just operational benefits, but there's no way to cross compare those. To say this one's more important than the other one, that's more of a policy decision. And to date, it's just been a conversation that we try to have as projects get put up by pushing this at the, at the Safety Subcommittee, at the MPO as well. But particularly considering vulnerable road users and projects where we're spending safety improvement funds, we should really be prioritizing safety over capacity. So that's all that is. It's just getting people at the table to start talking about. I think it's helpful if we get that in the long range transportation plan. Anne's nodding her head. She knows that I'm passionate about this one. So, any questions about that? Board members don't like that idea because, you know, this is coming from me as a staff person, not necessarily a board, but it's more of a policy-type thing as opposed to a design-type thing. It influences design.
Well, I'll just say, you know, from the CCMPO side too, I think that's been the messaging. That's been the discussion for the past few years, and staff has done a great job of doing things like create, you know, helping us create the Safety Committee and, you know, pushing for the Active Transportation Plan for the county because that wasn't going to happen. You know, that was just going to be the next bike route update. And so, and we made that happen, knowing that members really do prioritize safety in these things. So, yeah, however we can, you know, have that permeate the plan and, you know, really stand out as, you know, the, you know, a main theme of, you know, prioritization here, I'd be totally supportive.
Yeah, and it really, I think it helps with Federal Highway Safe Systems approach with the two spokes on the wheel that we can deal with with respect to designs of projects and how we can influence safety on the network. Yeah, and it really, I think it helps with federal highway safe systems approach with the two spokes on the wheel that we can deal with with respect to designs of projects and how we can influence safety on the network. Again, if we just start thinking about safety more so than capacity, people may have to wait a little bit longer. But is that okay if we reduce the number of killed or seriously injured people? I think so. I think I'm willing to wait a little bit longer if someone else makes it home. Yeah. Okay. That's that bullet point. The next bullet point, I'm sorry.
Ms. Stevens had a
No, I was just going to say thank you for that bullet point, actually. Because as, as somebody who frequently heads out to like Hubler Farm or something, I do worry about the horse and buggy issue, although it said somewhere that it's not really an issue for us, regionally I think it is. And then also any sort of like farm equipment that gets on our roads. So I appreciate that.
Thank you.
I do have a I appreciate the last two above others. Actually, I'm curious how that makes it into the plan, given that, I mean, you acknowledge that it's not a thing, it's more of a
Yeah, it's not project-related.
Yeah.
But the Long Range Transportation Plan is more than just a list of projects.
Sure.
It really starts talking about some of the planning theories, some of the concerns about safety that we have here. Anne can probably go into a lot more of the detail in it, but there's other things in there than just the list of projects. Yeah, please do.
So we have to start somewhere with some of these concepts. So if we have a municipality that is saying, yes, this is what we want, we can then discuss it as part of the Long Range Transportation Plan process. And then once it's in the plan, because I think these are great concepts to be in the plan, then we can say, hey, Pendot, these are our priorities. This is how we want to approach improvements. That's kind of where I think you're going with this.
Awesome, thanks for that clarity.
Yeah, I didn't talk about the last bullet there, sorry about that, but that's just kind of encouraging. We have a traffic calming policy here at the township, but I think Pendot's coming out with a rewrite update to their policy, kind of a revamp of it, and they're going to put it as a chapter in their design manual. I think once that gets published, it'll be who's us just to kind of walk through that, look at ours, see if it's worth updating. But even just encouraging other municipalities that don't have traffic calming or complete streets policies to consider implementing those types of things. So what other ideas you folks have with respect to needs or issues that I missed? Anyone?
I would put that Airport Connector at the top of the list and given I-99 is already in progress at the bottom. And I don't know, that's my feeling on if we were to, if those were being presented as a what's number one.
Not necessarily in priority order, but I'll make a note of that one.
I'll go next then, since I was going to either cross it off or remove or put it at the bottom because I looked then at, you know, the safety points and where does that fit in to our safety as a priority? I understand the businesses want it, Penn State wants it. I don't know where, you know, it's a very, very expensive, time-intensive project. And so I don't know where that fits in. The Connector Project and the interchange have a lot of safety components. You know, that was with the Connector, that was the leading idea of getting that started. So with the Airport Connector, I just have trouble fitting that into a list of priorities, understanding, you know, all the competing ones here.
Yeah, there's basically three projects listed there, the other two are more policy-type actions, but
Well, and you know, you look at the whole, you know, the list of, you know, all projects.
Yeah, there'll be more than this coming out of it, no doubt.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. The only other comment I was going to make was on that last one with the Complete Streets. I think when the MPO did the strategic plan, there was a lot of discussion about engaging more with the rural communities that are part of the MPO. And I think that will go a long way toward this too, you know, encouraging them to be involved and all the planning and, you know, education on the benefits that they'll see from that kind of planning. So I think we'll, I think we'll see effects from that.
And that does tie in nicely with the Active Transportation Plan that's been done as well.
Yeah.
Any further remarks? I think sometimes the connectivity to the airport kind of gets overemphasized. I understand this may be a little bit of an overlap, but this, I think this is something that's relevant to the county and regional is just that rail access, having that rail access in there. There is a lot of great benefits to that as well, even for the business community because you could be productive when you're actually traveling. It's also a greener mode of transportation, so just throwing that out there. Any further discussion from the board? Otherwise, I was just going to note we are around the one-hour mark into the meeting. Did any board members have a hard stop this afternoon? Looks like we probably only got like one or two more slides.
Yeah, one more slide here.
You know, just want to be mindful of everyone's time, otherwise, you know. One thirty, okay. I think we might be able to put that in. Otherwise, we'll, I think we're good to go to the next slide run.
Okay. Yeah, so the last one then just deals with land use. This is, whoops, this is the last slide that we have. So just what are the anticipated changes in land use and development, potential issues, impacts related to the transportation system? So within the township, I just kind of looked around from my knowledge, okay, what has been done or what's in the works? What has not been yet done that has potential, enlisted those out. So the Pine Hall TTD, I think you're all familiar with where that one's located. So that has a lot of potential for development and traffic. The completion of the Turnberry TTD, it's only about half built out really, maybe not even half. The Fox Point PRD, so that would be the completion of Fox Point Drive would also be a a transportation connection that would occur in there as well, so you could traverse from Sleepy Hollow Drive down to Pine Hall Road without getting on Science Park Road. So that's kind of a transportation network built as well when that completes. Likewise, the Landings, built out of that, there's some section along Bristol Avenue, but then there's also the section back by the Teenage League Fields that would get the connection over to Blue Course Drive. The Hillside subdivision, sometimes I forget about that one myself, but there's a substantial amount of land there in the Hillside subdivision that has not been developed. And that one, old traffic studies projected the need for some type of improvements at their access on Pine Grove Road. Now, that roundabout gateway alternative would address that. Their study that was completed years and years ago forecasted the need for a traffic signal there when that development was fully built out. And then the last one I listed is the Harder Development. So we saw the first piece of that with the Sheets Dollar General and the Twenty-Six Houses, Twenty-Six, Thirty-two? Sorry, forgot. But the other side of White Hall Road going all the way up to Good Hope Farms is also commercial and residential development that has that same development intensity potential going on there too. So those were kind of the holes that I saw within our primary growth area. Maybe I forgot something, but I think those are the ones that we can provide on to the MPO. And they're probably pretty much well aware of most of these already, but I don't think we're looking at any major rezonings or requests for change in our regional growth boundary, at least not that I've heard whispers of.
Yes, Mr. Patterson?
Blue Course left on by the senior home, isn't there, is that one of those?
Oh, where Havishar Boulevard?
Yeah, Havishar, yeah.
That's the Turnberry.
That's Turnberry.
Okay, guys, okay, thank you.
Yes, when you go in there, all that land on the right-hand side, going the whole way over to Circleville Road, it's master planned, they just haven't progressed with that yet.
Sure.
The only real major connector links that we kind of fall into our Collector Road category that aren't done would be the completion of Fox Point Drive. And what was the other one? Oh, yeah, Park Center Boulevard, coming out of the backside of the Landings going over to Blue Course Drive at Westerly Parkway.
At our current pace, we won't make 2055 with all that.
Things are a little slow right now. We're seeing more redevelopment. If you're in the retail storage industry or convenience store industry, then things are good right now.
That's great, that's great. Gas station on each one of those will be right on time.
So that's what I have, that's all I have for you that I could pull together. And any other last feedback on this last slide? Anyone else have anything?
I would add to this one, even just looking at like existing development, like we heard about the plan with Penn State to move all their ARL facilities within the next fifty years to Innovation Park. And considering that there are a good number in Ferguson Township, what is Penn State maybe planning to do with those facilities in the long term? And what may come about that? Would that lessen traffic impacts or would those get reused to something that might change or the impact? So something to look ahead at.
That's a, that's a good question, Jeremy. I think for an existing building that's there, if the zoning doesn't change and the land use is relatively consistent, I wouldn't see a huge change in the trip forecast when in and out of that site. If we look at a rezoning of it though, if we look at, hey, this was, you know, it was light industrial, but now we're going to go, you know, we want to put shopping out here and we're going to make this a retail corridor, you know, replicate North Arthur Street on Science Park Road, well, we need to talk. Because that's going to be a big change, right? So those kind of things, even before, I think we would say LRTP, this is something, I think that would be more Ferguson Township as a rezoning analysis. Let's look at the potential traffic impacts before we even consider rezoning the land. So I think land use changes within the same zoning district don't scare me as much for an existing building that's there. Large vacant tracks that aren't developed yet, or significant rezonings of lands, I think are the ones we're going to see, the more of the traffic generation that we're going to say, okay, this is timeout, let's think about this a little bit before we act.
Thank you.
Can we get some Planning Commission maybe input on this? Is that, is that a possibility? Because I, just thinking about like, I don't know, we've been talking a little bit about what's that flexible zoning, what's that called though? Are we allowing for a little bit more?
Mixed use?
Yeah, what is that called? I can't remember anymore, but there
Conditional or form-based?
Form-based, that's it.
Does CRPA have plans to engage Planning Commissions for input on this? Or are you looking, what is the process or the plan? I think that's a great question.
Yeah, so we're leaving it up to the individual municipalities, whether you want one of your advisory boards to have a similar presentation. So far, we have not been taken up on it, but we're happy to do that if you feel like it's useful when representing Ferguson Township in the plan.
Well, I think something to think about is that, you know, oftentimes getting consensus among a board of supervisors can often be an interesting, artful approach. And so while I think Planning Commission certainly can provide feedback, if that was part of the, you know, I would say required process, that would make sense. And I think, you know, had we thought about that early on, we don't, we could have considered what a dual meeting might have looked like. But, you know, representing the township, we generally bring these items directly to the Board of Supervisors, the policymakers, the body that governs the municipality.
Yeah, this is due in March, right?
Final comments, yeah.
Final comments due in March. So I'll ask Patty, Jeremy, Lisa, like, would it hurt to get a little bit more feedback from some other entities? Maybe we can encourage the community members to log a citizen portal issue that says, hey, this street could use a little thing, and then that could be a feedback point. So a couple more feedback points and maybe we come back together and see if there's anything to add in, I don't know, February? At the February Board Meeting as an agenda item?
Yeah, I guess I'd ask about the public engagement
Yeah.
process that you guys undertake for this too.
Yeah, so that's a good question because we got a light start on this, I'll be honest. And so what we are doing is going out to all of the municipalities and we are meeting with various stakeholders such as CBICC, Shandon Valley Economic Development folks. We are a little behind on our online engagement. We are doing a, hey, tell us your issue kind of form that we're going to distribute very soon. But other than that, at this point, given the schedule that we have to work with, we're probably not going to be doing a whole lot else.
So if we can get the form publicized and encourage, you know, encourage people to
Okay, so there will, but I didn't hear a lot of confidence in that form though. What, is there confidence in the form?
So we're going to notify all the municipalities to the extent they are able, we are going to distribute it.
Okay, by when?
Well, the form is done.
Okay.
So Anne just needs to like get it in a format that will capture people's attention, which I'm not the artist, so I need a little staff help. But in the next two weeks, we need to get it out, yeah. And that will probably sit a little bit longer than the March fourteenth deadline. Really trying to see if there's anything that's showing up that municipal officials or our stakeholders that we've interviewed haven't suggested, like, are we missing something? So to a certain extent, it's trying to capture something that maybe no one thought of.
Okay, so there's an opportunity in our, to get the link when it ever come, when it comes out on roughly January twenty-second. I just added two weeks to today. To include that in our agenda under announcements, click on this link if you've got some long-range transportation planning ideas. So we can put it in every meeting between January twenty-second and, you said, March fourteenth?
So that is our deadline for the municipalities, the municipal officials and the stakeholders, mainly because we didn't want it to drag out too long. And we've been working on this for a couple of months now and didn't want to extend it any longer than we had to because we have to really receive all this data and somehow put it in a form that's somewhat legible. But to the extent that it is useful, we want that form to be put out there. The form is actually ready, I could give staff the link now. I just don't have a shiny flyer for you right now to post like on Facebook or something like that.
Yeah, I think the more we can put the link in little places that people may or may not see over time, the higher chance you have for other feedback. I, again, there's four municipal leaders, you got staff, Ron, the team have a lot of really good stuff. And so it's like, what is that other thing that maybe we're missing? That these ten people or fifteen that have opined thus far versus the ten thousand drivers and twenty thousand, eighteen thousand walkers and bikers? So, you know, being able to just have a chance at getting a few more inputs, that's my concern. And so if you're able to get the link to staff, we can get it in the, out there now, it may not be pretty. Doesn't matter to me.
All right, great.
Okay. Well, it does matter to me because then we get the calls and then they're going to say, who do we talk to? So, you know, I think my question would be to ask, how soon do you think you'll have that flyer? Or at least some verbiage that we can add to, whether it be the website or wherever we posted? Because if we just put a link there, we will inevitably get residents calling and asking the who, the what, the where, the how. So I really want to kind of take a pause here and think about this. So, you know, I'll yield to Anne and say, as soon as you can get that to us, over to our communications coordinator, we certainly, I'll talk to the chair about adding it to the agenda. It's not currently part of our order of business, we don't have a section for links. But we can certainly get it on our website and we can get it on our social media. And to the extent that we can also circulate that, I think we'll certainly release our e-newsletter. So we can get it in our e-newsletter, that'll circulate and go out to, I believe, nearly two thousand residents that subscribe or citizens that subscribe. We can put it on our ABCs, we can put it on as an announcement to our ABCs that meet between now and then. So there are certainly, there's a, there's a list of what we call like a protocol as to how we get announcements out to our internal channels. And, but that, whether it be a flyer or even just a one or two-sentence description as to who the point of contact is in your office, if people have questions or want to understand how this data will be used, that is essential to being able to let, connect that to the link wherever we post it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
I just wanted to add too, if I may, I would, I agree with that and I would also reach out to CATA to put some and I would also reach out to CADA to put something on their buses because students will just scan a QR code and, and take a survey while they're riding the bus into campus.
Very good point.
I was gonna share with the manager, don't quote me on this, but I do believe in twenty nineteen, there was actually a joint session of the board of supervisors and the planning commission on this. But that, that was back in twenty nineteen. But yeah, at least I thought that, what, what, what it was, but it may have been on a different matter somewhat related to transportation, but.
I, you said twenty? Seventeen.
Twenty nineteen.
I don't believe we had that discussion for planning for the long-range transportation in twenty nineteen. I could be wrong, but I don't think we were in preparation in twenty nineteen, cause it's twenty twenty-four. But nonetheless, I, I generally think that that can be a great approach to getting collective feedback. If I'm hearing Ann correctly and I'll, and I'll yield to her to intervene if I'm, if I'm not seeing it correctly, they're looking for consensus on represent, you know, for representation of the municipality. And so if, if there's time and interest and Ann would like to coordinate to have planning commissions as well as the elected official dual conversation, we certainly will assist with facilitating that. But I'm just mindful about time and recognizing she's got other member municipalities to, to attend. So I, I can talk with Ann offline to see what, what we might be able to consider. But I would also kind of look to the board to understand that if there isn't consensus between the board and the planning commission, that makes it a little bit more challenging for the center region planning agency to understand what exactly will be represented by Ferguson Township. So this might be one of those areas that I would caution for that.
Mr. Patterson?
So I had two concerns, one was the community writ large and two was planning commission. So the community writ large is addressed, we're gonna have a link. There'll be some, thank you for operationalizing that, madam manager. And so the second thing is this planning commission. So if there is a plan, and so I, what I'm looking for from the board, I'm gonna toss this out, is if there's a planning commission meeting that has some space to have engineer cyber have this discussion on these five questions for additional feedback, then I would ask that we maybe direct, again, only if there's space. I don't wanna move anything around of township operations. If there is space to have this, this conversation, I would ask that they go ahead and slot that in as a thing to take up twenty, thirty, forty-five minutes, whatever the time is available to do it between now and March first, such that on March, whatever our March township meeting is, second Tuesday, that on that date, we then receive that feedback and up, thumbs up or thumbs down, the additional feedback to go in this presentation as the final from the, from the board. Thoughts or reactions?
Just gonna say it, thought we're gathering the input now.
This right here, I think we, we pretty, we're kind of thumbs up on the, the context of the things, right? Maybe we're not, I don't, I thought we were, it seems like we're okay, maybe. Unlike just conceptually, the things in the five questions.
Well, they got all of our comments.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we've got some stuff. I'm just saying like now there's some other comments that they want from the board. Or I'm saying, are other people inputting? And particularly the planning commission on this question. And so, hey, planning commission, what do you guys think about question five? To get their feedback for us to then say, oh, there are some other things, thumbs up, and let's add that to the comments.
I'm gonna defer to the staff on that.
Yeah, so, so I would say that that type of an approach is, is often considered and very effective. In this particular scenario, I would say if we were going to have done that, we would have done that first, right? And then this would be the final conversation, just recognizing township engineers' time and work plans and, and just understanding that we kind of initiated it in this direction. And so at this point in time, I would say I can talk to Ann offline. If there's an approach or maybe if we can creatively come up with a way that maybe we get some type of feedback from planning commission, we will. But I also wanna be mindful that it's generally, there's not always an alignment. And so I hear that you're suggesting bringing it back to another meeting. And then we would, you know, it would be if township engineer is available to be part of this conversation because then we have to kind of talk through and facilitate how we're going to thumbs up or thumbs down. Sometimes there's a safety component that is, you know, really at the perspective or expertise level that the engineer would have, understanding the, you know, requirements that PennDOT might have, depending on if we're speaking about a corridor. So there's, I'm, I'm just recognizing that that approach may have been an effective approach, but we did not initiate this process in that way. And I'm not, I'm not confident that we would be able to do that. But I will talk with Ann offline to see what creative options might exist. And if there are options, we will, we will consider pursuing them. So generally, like the comp plan, for example, the update to the comp plan, if CRPA comes to us and says we would like input from planning commission, like you have just recently, we received notification from Ann's office that there's a survey actually just recently that they want facilitated to the planning commission. And so that came directly from COG with that approach. And this did not, for whatever reason, I'm just facilitating the board discussion. And I think Ann shared, not every member municipality has even brought it for the priority discussion among the elected officials. It stayed with staff or perhaps wasn't a higher rank priority. So I hear the interest and I really, you know, appreciate the interest in wanting to engage residents for more increased feedback. This public meeting in itself is an opportunity for folks to attend. And I trust that Ann will continue to, her office will continue to engage and raise awareness with citizens in our community for feedback. But at this time, I, you know, I'm not so sure that I can guarantee you an approach that would be effective within the timeframe that we currently have.
Did, Ann, did you mention about the CR, the center region planning commission was gonna maybe look at this or?
So we in Center County don't have a consistent set of regional planning commissions that meet.
Okay.
And that continues to be a problem for us at a county level. So the, the, the goal really was to meet with every municipality, to give them an opportunity with these five questions. It's tough because center region is very active, but when you go out to some of our outlying locations, we have to be careful that we, we follow what the stand, the procedures are for the municipality. And we're fine with that, it doesn't, doesn't bother us. But we also want to make sure that we are treating each municipality somewhat uniformly, that we decided to visit you. And if you want us to do a little bit more groundwork, fine, not a problem. But it's not being initiated by, by MPO staff.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
So I was gonna say, I, the, the board shared their comments. There's also gonna be a public input period on this as well. So just gonna say, any, you know, just final thoughts at this point? If anyone, board had it? Not CNN, I.
Great presentation.
Yep. Yeah, it was good a presentation. Did you have any final remarks or, okay, yep, just, yeah, thank, thank you for your time and great presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome. Yeah, there was no action, just basically covering, getting information, providing feedback. So that will move us into new business, no items on the consent agenda. So communications to the board, do they wanna have any communications they wanted to share? I was gonna bring to your attention, you may have all got an email, all the board members this morning may have got an email from Scott Binkley on a upcoming presentation on what government should know and do, final rule to strengthen web and mobile app access for people with disabilities. This is a part of the Center Region Anti-Bias Coalition that's been putting on some workshops throughout the last couple of years for elected officials. We've had pretty much representation from everyone and I know, I think everyone here has at least met once or twice with that group. So just note that it'll be on Tuesday, February fourth at seven o'clock. So I think there's a lot of good information on there. I was gonna say, for the manager, I, I believe you're welcome to attend. We've, we've had municipal managers and other staff attend as well. I know, looks like with some compliance deadlines coming down from the courts, it, it is important that we make sure our website is accessible, that people can read the font and be able to capture the information in a usable manner, so. Just throwing out that, out there, any other communications? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
No, so moved.
All right, we are adjourned, have a good afternoon.